All right, it is 8:03. I will call this Board of Education meeting to order. Please stand if you are able and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silence. Thank you. Official meeting notification, Mr. Stalson?
Public notice of this meeting has been given by communication from the superintendent's office to the public, to those news media who have requested such notices, and to the Milwaukee Journal Sentinel, Northwest Now, Express News, and West Bend Daily News. Public notice has also been posted in schools throughout the district and on GSDWI.org website, as well as Cable Access Channel 96.
All right, item B, roll call, Amanda, please.
Medved, absent excuse, Barney.
Here.
Ryanamyn, here. Sonderberg.
Here.
Lo.
Here.
Gordon.
Here.
Paula.
Here.
Thank you. Item number two, approval of agenda, entertaining motion.
Motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Any discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
The motion carries. Item three, citizen comments. Community members and residents of the Germantown School District are invited to share their questions, comments, or concerns with the school board. When speaking, citizens should state their name for the record. And we ask that speakers, please keep your comments to three minutes or less to allow time for everyone to speak. As President Medved has done in the past, we'll call the person that is up, as well as the person that is on deck, so please be ready so we can keep moving. First up, Kevin Curtis. And next will be Monica Curtis.
Hello, my name is Kevin Curtis. I have two kids in the Germantown School District, ages seven and four. I came here to talk again about the community, about how we're doing masks in our schools, and that we should require them, much like most of our neighbors in the area. I've been keeping track of the COVID data that have been posted on it every day, and I've seen some numbers that have been startling to me. We are at 128 students sick. Now, I've been keeping track of these numbers myself, because it seems that the numbers seem to move off the page at a too rapid pace to really show a strong correlation, a strong amount of how many kids are getting sick per day. Since 9/10, the date that I started really tracking this up, nine student cases every school day have come to our schools. That is not a safe number to have. We have nine cases every day. We're averaging over 40 cases active in our school district. It's upsetting to me to see this. Out of, the CDC does some studies on this kind of stuff, on how outbreaks happen in schools. Out of the 191 schools that have had outbreaks so far this year that they have studied, 8.4% had masks from the entire, from the beginning. 32.5 started with late mask adoption. That's four times almost. And 59% of all these outbreaks were from school districts that did not have masks. The counties with school masks have less, have a less chance of people in the pediatric wings for COVID at their hospitals, almost a two to one ratio at the lowest levels. The number of deaths were brought up last time, and I wanted to make sure I got my numbers right about this. 544 deaths so far in our year and a half of this. How many died of cancer per year? 1,100. We're almost double that, we're almost half that number right there. How many people die, how many students, how many kids die of the flu each year? Between 37 and 200. Six, almost 6% of deaths are because of COVID in students. I've seen, my time is running out, so I wanted to bring up one last thing. I wanted to bring up Danny Reeves. I don't know if everyone knows his name, but he was the student at Fort Atkinson. He was a 13-year-old middle schooler. He tested positive for COVID. He was at his home for two days with cold-like symptoms and then died. This is the change that Fort Atkinson needed to make masks mandatory in their school. I hope that this is not the change that Germantown needs to make them mandatory. Thank you.
Thank you. Monica Curtis, and then Krista Ewer.
Hi, I'm Monica Curtis. I live in Germantown, and my husband and I have two children, ages seven and four, in the Germantown School District. I'm here again to beg you to make masks mandatory. The experts at the World Health Organization, the American Academy of Pediatrics, and yes, the Center for Disease Control, all recommend the same thing. Mandatory masking in schools. To scoff at and make faceless accusations against those who have dedicated their lives to the protection and advancement of public health does not make you tough or original. It only makes you foolish. Some here say we are living in fear. But when masks were mandatory last school year, it wasn't until April that we reached 100 total cases in the schools. This year, with masks optional, just over three weeks into the school year, we are over 100 cases. We are not living in fear. We're living in logic. Masks work. The last time I was here, I asked you all what it was going to take for you to listen to the experts, the people who have spent there, who have spent years guiding us and keeping us safe. Tonight, I simply ask, are we there yet? Thank you.
Thank you. Krista Ewer, and then Kelly Betcher.
Hello, Krista Ewer, Germantown. I have three kids in the school district. I'm here to talk about transparency. I've seen that on tonight's agenda, there's no discussion about transparency or adding the in-service or staff meeting information onto the website. That's something that's been talked about for a couple months now. I'd like to know what the plan is, what action we're going to take. I do acknowledge that a lot of curriculum has been posted. I appreciate that. I know Tracy, you've been working hard on that. I truly appreciate what you guys have done so far. But I've already experienced my kids bringing home controversial material that I'm working through. I addressed it last time and mentioned it. I've found more controversial material coming home with my second grader. This is frustrating to me. I understand that you can't have eyes and ears on everything that's happening. But this transparency is so important to us parents that we can catch this material, review it before it's presented to our students. So I appreciate your hard work, but we need to do more. And we need to push it, and we need to get it on the website as soon as possible. The curriculum that's up there is a good overview, but I think there could be more information from the teachers, lesson plans, handouts. It, what's on the website tells you in general what they're learning about, but you're not seeing what your student is seeing. And that's ultimately what I would want to see on the website. So thank you for your work. I think we have more to do, as Bob has said, during the annual meeting. So let's, let's keep going for it. Thank you.
Thank you. Kelly Betcher, and then Teresa Schneider.
Good evening. I want to thank you for getting my name right tonight. That's the first time. It's awesome. So I want to thank the board for all of your efforts. Normally, I prepare a formal speech. I didn't this time. And then something struck my inspiration. Because we come here month after month, fighting, fighting over what's best for our children, fighting over masks, fighting over transparency. These stripes already fought for freedom. We shouldn't have to continue to fight for freedom to breathe. They come here with their science. We aren't asking to take anything away from anybody. We want people to have choice. And I appreciate that you guys have held strong with that choice of masks. And I appreciate that the school bus company came and clarified, because I have had my children told to get off of the bus, because they didn't have masks on and wouldn't put them on. I corrected the driver, and they were allowed on the bus. But the things that have been allowed to come into our schools, the agenda of Brenda, the SEL, the things that have been allowed in are inexcusable. Children should be children. They shouldn't be exposed to these things that prevent them from their youth. It's just not right. The things that they're witnessing, the things that they are being taught. This year, made the choice to pull my kids from public school, best choice I've ever made. They come home happy every day. They look forward to going back to school. It breaks my heart that it took a private school to do that, because we were excited about the Germantown School District when we enrolled our children. We have a long way to go. We need to do better for the children. Everybody talks about the passion for the children and doing what's best for the children. It's time for actions, not empty words.
Thank you. Teresa Schneider, and then Scott Hefley.
Hi, my name is Teresa Schneider. First off, thank you for the transparency that you're showing. I know it's not easy to get everything up there. We appreciate that very much. We appreciate the email responses from those of you that send them to us, and we appreciate the concern for our kids. Secondly, the busing issues. They stood before you tonight and told you, we got this, ridership's down, we're good. Have any of you been at drop-off? It's a mess. More parents are taking their kids to school in the morning, or dropping them off, or picking them up in the afternoon, because the kids don't want to be on the buses, because it's a mess. The influx of kids being picked up has got to be, I'm curious to hear those numbers, I really am. The inappropriate language on the bus. My 11-year-old, my sixth grader's coming home, going, "Mom," they were saying the N-word again, they were yelling, he's all freaked out. My ninth grader's getting off the bus, going, "Cool, there was a fight on the bus again." Totally different kids, okay? But this is what our kids are doing. We knew there would be problems putting the high schoolers with the middle school. And when I called attention to it, the same two students that had the problem were supposedly reprimanded, they got right back on the bus, and they're doing it again. There needs to be a zero tolerance across the board, okay? Bad language, the N-word, all of it, needs to stop on the buses. And I get the buses, I'm not that old, I remember the high school bus, okay? But when the sixth graders are coming home freaked out, there's a problem, okay? So we need riders, we need teachers, we need something to fix this. Thirdly, the masks continue to be a hot topic. We ask that you stay with your decision. We appreciate you letting them be optional. We're not trying to take away, trying to take away choices from anyone. If you want your kid to wear a mask, wear a mask. If you don't, don't, period, okay? Last year, to piggyback off of what someone said, yes, last year we had fewer cases. We also had fewer kids in school. We had like 50% or something crazy like that at home. Yes, so the numbers aren't gonna, aren't going to be the same as they were last year. Nurse Tammy stood there at the MacArthur meeting and said that we will see an uptick in cases and sickness, and kids will be getting sicker, longer, worse this year, because we've killed their immune systems. We've had them in the masks, we've had them segregated, we have them, all of this, for so long, that now they have to relearn, and their bodies have to relearn how to be around everybody. Everybody's doing a phenomenal job, okay? Everyone I know that's sick, and there's not that many of them, are either vaccinated, or getting vaccinated, or anything, you know, similar things, but they're not dying. They're not, we're not killing our children by letting them have this choice. We knew this was coming. We were prepared for it. We were told it last year. Those of us who wanted to take action on it, did. So thank you very much.
Teresa, are you willing to, Teresa, are you willing to share what bust rattle that is so we can take a look at it?
She's texting, we're good.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Scott Hefley. After Scott will be Alyssa Paulo.
Scott Hefley, Germantown. Thanks for the time. Just a couple quick things. After the board meeting last time, I know you voted on something, and all of you should have gotten an email from me. As a matter of fact, I know you all did. I want to thank the three of you that responded to me, the other four that didn't respond to me. I don't know what your reasons are, but I'm not going to say who didn't, who didn't. But I'd like to hear from all of you, because I think I had a legitimate request and laid out a legitimate argument for what I put forth here. So I'm hoping that the rest of you get back to me. You don't have to, but I'm just asking if you would. The other thing is, I'll make a disclaimer, both my children, my youngest graduated from Germantown 2020. He's one of those COVID kids, seniors, that we all know about. And he's in college now, and I can tell you that it was tough, that last year was tough on him. They lost out in all the banquet award ceremonies, all the seniors, he got a scholarship, I mean, none of those dinners, none of that stuff. And last year was tough on him. But, you know, we worked with him, and the school worked with him, and he's doing really well now. But I'm telling you that there was a toll taken on these kids, okay? Seen, unseen, whatever. I mean, he's 19 years old, what's he going to tell your dad? I didn't tell my dad nothing when I was 19, right? But we tried and got him through, and he was a very high-achieving student, okay? Very, very high achieving. So it's a real thing. We have to work through it. We have to be smart about it. But, you know, there's got to be hope, right? And we got to get back to normal, because we don't know about the long-term effects of what's going on with these kids. You know, we can't mask kids forever. We can't do that. So we have to figure out a way and work together, okay? So mask optional, for me, if you feel like you're, you know, you need that, that's fine. And if you don't, again, like was spoken earlier, freedom of choice. The last thing I'll say, I know I have limited time, which is probably good for me. It started a few years ago, I started noticing it, but I just started thinking about it more lately. I feel that this district has lost a lot of teachers. A lot have left in the last three, four, five years. And I mean a lot. And they weren't all super experienced, but we lost some teachers that had experience, okay? I feel we got to find a way to not let that happen on an ongoing basis. We lost some good teachers, we lost some popular teachers, we lost some teachers that were coaches that the kids loved, all right? Whatever it takes, I think we got to find a way to retain teachers. And I know it's difficult, and I know we got outbid by other districts and all these things going on, but I think we got to find a way. And it pains me to say this, I grew up in Grafton, and we hated Cedarburg, but they're one of the top performing districts in the entire state. Go look it up, they are. And when I went to school, they were horrible, so they did something. They incorporated performance-based bonuses for teachers that did well based on performance metrics. And I know a couple teachers that I heard about got bonuses up to $3,000. I'm not saying we can do that or implement that. I'm saying we should take a look at it, because they are very, very high academic-related school district, and they weren't 30 years ago. Thank you.
Thank you. Alyssa, and then Chad Howie.
Alyssa Paulo, Germantown. So I know at last school board meeting, there was a lot of discussion with the curriculum transparency and kind of like defining terms. So what I'd like to propose is some recent model legislation. Last week, Christopher Rufo provided testimony to the Wisconsin Senate Committee, and a big portion of what he was talking on was transparency with curriculum in the classrooms. And so this article with this model legislation comes from Manhattan Institute, and I'm just going to read a portion of it. Section two, which is transparency and training in curriculum. One, all training materials used for staff and faculty training will be posted. All instructional or curriculum materials, such instructional materials shall identify at a minimum, title, author, organization, and any website associated with each material and activity, a brief description of the instructional material, a link to the instructional material if publicly available on the internet, or information on how to request, to review a copy of the instructional material, an identity of the teacher if the instructional material was created by a teacher. Their next point, any procedures for the documentation, review, or approval of the training, instructional or curricular materials used for staff and faculty training or student instruction at the school, included by the principal, curriculum administrators, or teachers. And to me, this really speaks to the teacher-in-service materials. And then lastly, the information shall be displayed online prior to the first instance of training or instruction, or at latest, seven days after the training or the instruction. Such information shall remain displayed on the school website for at least two years. So I'm just asking you to please look at this and use it as a baseline to help build the further curriculum transparency. With a minute left, I'm just going to talk about masks. Please continue to keep the masks optional for our students. The masks themselves have too big of a weaving that the COVID particles get through it. So it's not protecting the kids. If we want to protect them, like we do in healthcare, then you have to wear an N95. Most children would fail an N95 fit test, so putting that on them as well would not be efficient. So then in healthcare, your next step is putting on a caper device, which no child is going to wear a caper device around the schools. They are a pain to wear in the hospitals when you have to be in them for a 12-hour shift. So please just continue to keep the masks optional for the students. Thank you.
Thank you. Chad, and then Richard Bianca.
Hello, my name is Chad. Got three kids in the district. I also wanted to talk to you about transparency tonight. Recently experienced a situation last week where my kid came home, told me that she took a climate survey. This is for second through fourth or fifth grade at an elementary school here. And the survey itself wasn't all that bad, but they wanted to classify and look at things through lenses with sex and race as the last two questions. Half the kids didn't even know what the word Caucasian was, so that was a problem. How are they supposed to answer it if they don't even know these words? With that being said, I couldn't even see the survey when I talked to the principal. I was told I needed to file an open records request. I went to the school that afternoon, after school was out, and I was told I had to file an open records request to see the survey that you guys gave my child. Hearing that there was race involved, I didn't know what to think. A lot of stuff going on in the past year, so... After he had told me to do that, he sourced Mr. Stalson as telling all principals that if a parent wants to see material, that we need to foil, or file a FOIA request. It didn't need to be that big of a deal. All he had to do was walk me inside. If he didn't have the information, he could have got it from me the next day and told me that. I probably wouldn't have made such a big deal about it. But it really pissed me off when I told that I needed to file a FOIA request to get it legally to find out what you guys are showing my kids. I don't agree with it. There's no reason to do that. I tried to go and talk, be personable with the principal, and have the conversation for him to show me, and that's the way I was directed to go. We've got a problem with Brendan not being able to post curriculum, because she doesn't know what, you know, she doesn't know what timeframe she can get it up by, because they're filing, they're having to fill all these FOIA requests that are coming in, you know? I see that as a big problem. It's a lack of trust that I have when I can't go talk to the principal and say, "What did you show my kid?" I think that needs to get looked at. It's unnecessary, doesn't show trust one bit. So maybe you can look into that, Mr. Stalson?
We did.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Richard, and then Sarah Larson.
Richard Bianca, Germantown. Okay. I want to talk about one thing, but I want to just mention something about masks that I, that I read about. The number of respiratory infections grow dramatically with the constant wearing of masks. So sometimes they cause more harm than good. Now, the reason I'm standing up here is I'm emphasizing the disinformation we're getting from the CDC about the effectiveness of vaccines. I sent you all an article about the effectiveness of Ecto Evermectin. In, there's a product, and I'm going to summarize it, because not everybody here got the email. There's a province in India, two-thirds the size of the United States. In May, early May, they had 40,000 new cases of COVID a day. They only had 5.8% of their population vaccinated. 5.8%, it's that, not much. Anyway, they started promoting, the government started promoting the use of one drug, Evermectin. From the 40,000 new cases in May to September, mid-September, just a week ago, they were down to 19 new cases. CDC doesn't want us to know this. They're pushing a shot in the arm. They're not pushing the effectiveness of hydrochloroquine either. It is time we stop the BS following the BS of the CDC. They have an agenda, and we have to recognize it. They're not out there for our best interest. They're there in coot's with the drug manufacturers. And as I pointed out, the drug manufacturers get almost $40 for the double dose of vaccines. The, the, the Evermectin requires five bills, three cents each. You guys can all do the math. Thank you.
Thank you. Sarah, and then Dennis Myers.
Good evening. Sarah Larson, Germantown. My comments are going to surround curriculum and transparency. Kudos to everything that's already been uploaded on the website. I think that's a really great start. As others have mentioned, there certainly is a way that we need to go in that. I wasn't able to attend last meeting, and I was surprised that there was an update from the Curriculum Committee, because there was no curriculum packet on the website, and there is also no curriculum video from that meeting. So I'm wondering, why was that September 8th or 13th meeting not posted? Given that this is such a high-visibility topic, it kind of makes you wonder, why is that transparency if you don't post the committee packet and no one had visibility to it? So that's one item. The other thing is, in June, I had shared with several board members proposed language, obviously about CRT and different things like that, and included in that there was language about transparency, because already on the legal front in June, they, many states were looking at legislation about mandating school transparency in light of everything that was taking place. I'm more than happy, I believe one of your board colleagues probably shared my email, maybe with all of you, but I'm happy to go ahead and forward that language. But I would like to share a sample of it, because it, I was a little bit surprised when Brenda was questioning what makes up curricular materials. And I think this summary of criteria and definitions that I included with the possible motion surrounding transparency really nails it as to what our community is looking to see. And so, learning materials would include, but are not limited to, the following. All textbooks and reading materials, videos, digital materials, websites, and other online applications. Used for instruction means assigned, distributed, or otherwise presented to students in any course for which students receive academic credit, or in any educational capacity in which participation of the student body is required by the school, or in which a majority of students in a given grade level participate. It also applies to materials from among which students are required to select one or more if available selection is restricted to specific titles. Activities include, but are not limited to, assemblies, guest lectures, or other education events facilitated by the district staff, including those conducted by outside individuals or organizations excluding student presentations. And then the school should list all information, as Alyssa had mentioned, citing the source and all of those other things. The other element that I think the public is really longing for is the transparency in the staff development area. And I had a motion surrounding that, which is move that the information surrounding proposed and planned staff development and in-service activities are uploaded to the district website and will include the calendar of activities, agendas, PowerPoints, reading lists, and other resource materials. So that would have resolved the issue from the prior principal at Amy, or at MacArthur, who had did those in-service trainings that the community was not pleased with. So again, I thank you for your progress on this, but we definitely need... So again, I thank you for your progress on this, but we definitely need to do more. We don't need open records requests. We've got a website. Thanks.
Thank you. Dennis Myers. Gone. Okay, Jody Graff and then Alex Harden.
Thank you, Jody Graff, Germantown. First, as always, thank you for everything that you do. You can go back probably last year this time and hear me say probably verbatim that I feel like you guys basically do this for free. So yes, according to the budget meeting, I absolutely think you should be paid and probably more. So thank you for your hours, your passion, and your overtime. It's very much appreciated. Basically, I would love to see us not have this repeat discussion of masks every two weeks. It's exhausting. As I'm sure you would all agree, the rules have been set, so I'd like to see that stop. Overall, Germantown is a discrimination-free mask choice district, period. So thank you for ensuring such by please refining the mitigation language to have zero discrimination for non-vaccinated versus vaccinated. A vaccine does not stop transmission and the goal of quarantining by household is to stop transmission. So we need to do away with that and have it apply to everybody with zero discrimination on who stays home and who doesn't. Thank you.
Thank you. Alex and then Gary Poindexter.
Hello, Alex Harden from Colgate. So thanks first of all to the board for everything you've been doing the last few weeks. I feel like we're starting to work together instead of button heads all the time, every every single week, for the most part, at least. The main thing I want to go over today is is a couple of weeks ago, someone brought up a Bible verse to to defend mandating mask wearing, which I found odd. That that verse was actually from from the Old Testament, and for those of you who maybe slept through Sunday School, that was God's law to the Israelites through Moses. And in the spirit of being consistent, I think if we're going to use one Old Testament law to mandate school policy, we should, we should use all of them, similar to my my comment a couple of weeks ago about the fire extinguishers and Brett, I still would like to see a motion to put a fire extinguisher in the hands of every student. No more kids lost to the to to death by fire. I mean, it's it's a big problem. So we should get that on the agenda. Anyways, there's, there's a lot of other, you know, kind of odd things in the New Testament that that I, or excuse me, the Old Testament that we we really should look to if we're going to use that to to require masks, for instance, sacrifices. The Old Testament mandates, you know, God mandated the Israelites make sacrifices, you know, fairly regularly. So I would like to see again another motion, please. Every every morning, I think it should be, kids arrive, pledge of allegiance, bleed out a goat and then burn it. I think I think that would be, I mean, again, only consistent. You know, other things that are in there would be stoning as punishment. So, you know, that's a, you know, new new meaning to someone's education being on the rocks. So again, this is, this is just, this is just silly, and I think, you know, using, using, using the Bible like that, it is wrong, you know, the 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 Old Testament was not written for for us today. There's only one thing that's going to save you, and that is a belief in the the birth, life, death, and resurrection of Jesus Christ. So I see, I see no reason to bring this sort of thing up again, and obviously I'm joking quite a bit, but I think you get my point. Thank you.
Thank you, Gary, and then Tice Curl.
Gary Poindexter, Germantown. This is its own topic. I was not able to find a baseline for absences for the Germantown School District. I keep hearing that we have all these amazing number of absentee because of COVID or whatever. It seems to me that if we had a baseline or something easy to find, that would make it easier to compare and say, oh, yeah, it's up one percent, not from zero, but from whatever the norm is. So if anybody could get that information, I'd appreciate it. Comment on budgeting, maybe you could try zero-based budgeting. When I hear statements like we take last year and we roll it over to next year and nobody has to cut much, other than maybe you come back and say, yeah, let's knock out a percent or two. Zero-based budgeting says basically you get a blank piece of paper and you need to justify everything in your budget. And I highly suggest that you consider something like that. I want to talk about the FOIA process. I suggested the superintendent look up why FOIA was was created, what the process was meant to do, and how it is intended to be used. If you look and specific to the survey that was referenced by Chad, if you look at twenty USC twelve thirty-two H lower C, one upper A, little I, says that if a survey is created by a third party, parents have a right to inspect the survey before the survey is administered or distributed. I don't know if this particular survey was created by a third party, if it was done by someone on the staff, but if it was, then you have a legal problem. If it was not created by a third party, twenty USC twelve thirty-two H little C, one upper C, I says that the parents have a right to review instructional material. Sarah did a nice job of describing what instructional material is. The federal law, the United States Code includes many of the things that she mentioned. And it says, it includes surveys, and it says, as dictated by local education agency policies. It was my understanding you dealt with this last year or earlier, and maybe it was July of this year that you dealt with it. When you said you wanted stuff on the website, we could, we could have the information we are looking for. And and I thank you for that. I encourage you to do it. The survey that we're talking about is something that was handed out to young children in their classroom. Why in the hell do we need a FOIA request to get information that's handed to our kids in the classes? I think that's wrong. I think you have a personnel problem. And I really wish you would start dealing with the personnel problem that you have sitting right over there. And I'm glad you're here because I don't like to talk poorly about people when they're not here facing me. Thank you.
Thank you. Tice Curl is the last one on the list. Welcome.
I'm Tice Curl. I live in Germantown. I want to share my perspective because I think it's a bit unique. In addition to having children in the district, I'm a pediatrician. I'm a pediatric oncologist at the Medical College of Wisconsin and Children's Hospital. There I take care of children with cancer. And I speak to you. I speak for myself, not for my employer, the hospital. I also have a PhD in microbiology and immunology. And a lot of my time is spent running a research laboratory where I investigate the immune system. My life revolves around children with compromised immune systems. I've taken care of several children from our Germantown community who have had cancer. Let me tell you, it's a very special experience to take care of them in the hospital and that same day come home, drive by Roberts and see that there's a fundraiser going on for them. I've seen how teachers here at Germantown High School at CMS and the students have done fundraisers. They've written cards, they've done posters to support and encircle these families and love, and I'm extremely proud of how Germantown has taken care of each other. But because of my work taking care of children with cancer, the pandemic's effects on them are very real to me. I've had patients who have died from COVID. The children that I take care of are at a high risk of having serious complications. When we look at the national data, many of them have had to have their chemotherapy delayed. And we've had children whose cancers come back because of that and have died. Not from COVID, but from complications. I've had families in our district who have children with cancer who have asked me if it's safe to send their kids to our schools. And what would you answer them? It's been hard for me. Because I know that based on my experience taking care of these children, that they are at a substantial risk to come to schools with the way things are now. The worries of these children, their families are very real, very justified, and deserve our consideration. Just as we've done fundraisers at Roberts, written cards, and opened our hearts to support them, keeping them safe from a very prevalent and potentially deadly disease is another way of showing our love for them. Mitigation strategies we used last year worked well, and with how things were in June, I was hopeful that we wouldn't need masks. But I believe that things have changed. And I'd ask you to consider and continue to reconsider the option of free paying masks in our schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Move on to item four, approval of minutes from the Board of Education, September thirteenth, twenty twenty-one. We'll entertain a motion.
Motion approved September thirteenth, twenty twenty-one, Board of Education.
Second.
All right, any discussion? Hold them favorite, say aye. Opposed? That motion carries. Item number five, reports and information items, A, annual seclusion and restraint report. Mr. Stelson?
Thank you. I'm going to hand it over to Mr. Lamb from People Services. So in compliance with Wisconsin twenty nineteen Act one eighteen, we provide a summary of incidents of seclusion and restraint from each previous year during the fall of each of the following years. And so what I'm providing for you now is a summary of the incidents of seclusion and restraints at each of our schools for the twenty-one, I'm sorry, twenty twenty-one school year. So I'll go by school and provide you with the number of incidents. So for Amy Bell, the number of incidents of physical restraint during last year were three, which consisted of two, involved two separate students, both of them being students with disabilities. At County Line, there were no incidents last year. MacArthur, there were twelve incidents of restraint, five of those involving five separate students, two of those being students with disabilities. And Rockfield, there were six incidents of seclusion involving two separate students and two of those being students with disabilities, eight incidents of restraint and involving the same two students. And Kennedy, there were no incidents of seclusion or restraint, and the high school, there were no incidents of seclusion and restraint. And I just want to emphasize that seclusion and or restraint is a last resort when safety is jeopardized. I also want to emphasize that staff are using techniques that they are trained to use, properly trained to use, and that the purpose is to maintain safety. And for those students who've been involved in an incident of seclusion or restraint, their parents have been informed about the details of each incident, and they are offered the opportunity to review a report afterwards. So there shouldn't be any parents, there's no reason for any parents to wonder because they should all be informed. And beginning last year, the law required this information to be submitted to DPI each December. So this December will be the second year that that information will be submitted and available for public access. Thank you. Any questions?
All right, thank you. Moving on to item six, Transportation Committee.
Thank you. Transportation Committee met tonight. We had two items on the agenda. The first was bus routes and student ridership. We had Patty and Colleen from Right Way here. They provided a report along with Brittany on our bus capacity routes. After reviewing it, we noticed that there was only two routes that really are riding high at about fifty-eight students on a bus when the capacity is seventy-two. They are working through some of their issues still. Things are getting better. They're still looking to hire bus drivers. And right now, I know Mr. Gonzalez at MacArthur has issued two buses with running late. And they're working through that. I know we have some questions about the traffic flow here at the high school, so we're going to be looking into those resources and what we can do differently and see if we can make it a little bit better. We also discussed the communication with Right Way with the school district on understanding and knowing ahead of time what type of incidents are going on our bus, and it should be reported to Brittany immediately so we know instead of later finding out by a parent. So that we're going to work on that. We also discussed an app for a resource that we'll be able to provide so that it'll be able to get better information on whether our buses are being delayed or if there's some type of issue with our bus, the parents have another resource to use. The other thing was the federal mandate for public and private bus companies, and we needed to get clarification. I know several of you were here earlier when we discussed this. And just so we're all clear, the policy of Right Way is that when they go to pick up a student, if a student comes to the bus without a mask, the driver will ask them if they have a mask, and if they say no, they will be provided a mask or asked to bring one the next day. If the student refuses to put that mask on, the student will be able to get on the bus and will not be refused transportation. We also reiterated that that needs to be expressed to all drivers and that all drivers follow that policy. And that's all I have to report.
All right, any questions from the board?
I'd just like to share with everybody. We didn't, we didn't get a chance during the Transportation Committee meeting, but I talked to Colleen and Patty afterwards because I suspected the case was both of those two women are driving school buses today due to a shortage of drivers. So besides taking all of your calls and doing their regular full-time job, they're also driving buses during the day. So I just want to thank those two women from Right Way for that. It shows the dedication that Right Way has to our school system. Good point.
Yep, thank you. Any other comments? All right, item seven, new business, discussion and action regarding resolution authorizing a taxable tax and revenue anticipation promissory note for cash flow purposes in an amount not to exceed eight point five million. Ms. Alder?
Sure, this was brought to the Finance Committee. And I believe it was September thirteenth. What's the last Finance Committee? Annually, we have been going out for a line of credit, which is in turn same type of thing as a short-term borrow. A short-term borrower is to pull all the money at one time. The line of credit is, it's available for you and you pull it as it's needed. So I'm coming to the board to have the motion to approve the line of credit with JP Morgan Chase Bank last year, just to give a note that it was not to exceed twelve million dollars last year, and we have reduced that to eight point five million dollars this year. It is due to the state aid payments or property tax payments that we don't get until January. So the day we get the property tax payments is the day we pay the loan back. But we are not able to pay payroll as well as our accounts payable without the the line of credit that we're asking for today.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve the resolution authorizing the taxable tax and revenue anticipation promissory note for cash flow purposes in an amount not to exceed eight million five hundred thousand dollars.
Second. All right, we have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion? Hold them in favor, please say aye. Opposed? That motion carries. Item B, discussion and action to approve new teacher contracts. Mr. Stelson?
Yep, and I'll hand it over to Mr. Noah.
Thank you.
It's an English teacher at Germantown High School. She's being recommended for this position as a result of a teacher resignation. This is a limited term contract for one hundred and sixty-three days in the amount of thirty-seven thousand one hundred and twenty-three dollars.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve the contract as presented.
Second.
All right, any discussion? Hold them in favor, say aye. Opposed? That motion carries. Item C, discussion and action to approve co-curricular contracts. Mr. Stelson?
Yep, and I'm gonna have Mr. Noah and Miss Nurdle present that.
Tonight, myself and Mr. Nurdle are here to request approval to issue the attached advisor spring and winter co-curricular coaching contracts for Germantown High School, Kennedy Middle School, and the various elementary schools for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. Contracts for new and existing employees will not be issued until appropriate forms have been received. The background checks have been completed. Additionally, contract language will include the following for the school year for the two thousand twenty-one, twenty-two school year compensation for coaching and advising contracts will utilize a prorated approach based on the number of allowable practices and competitions. Will utilize a prorated approach based on the number of allowable practices and competitions completed. That was inserted last year uh, in light of school closure and, and that consideration.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve the advisor DI winter and spring coaching contracts as presented.
Second.
All right. Any discussion?
Yeah, quick question. Uh, Mike and Sarah, the percentages year over year, they remain constant. Gavin, I think Chris correct?
We did make some adjustments. Uh, I think that was probably four, three or four years ago. Uh, where we did some um, adjustment to it, if you will. Uh, there were some comparatives done in the area. But we continue to look at it.
They, they've been the same since I've been here.
Thank you.
Four years.
Thank you.
Right. Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Uh, item D, discussion and possible action regarding return, return to school mitigation plan. Mr. Southson?
Thank you. Um, this is the, just the, the usual comparison burden rates and these are burden rates for um, the specific communities. And we share this just to see if there's any trends and you can see that um. As of September twenty-fourth last Friday compared to two weeks ago, the, the burden rates are higher now in each of the four zip codes. The uh, graphic on the left is school transmission level. Um, and if you look at the school transmission level um, from nine fifteen to nine twenty-two. Um, it, it's mixed in comparison and um, you'll see Germantown is somewhat in the middle. Um, and. One of the questions someone had asked me um. Last week when I was looking at this was, well, which districts um, have masks and don't have masks and it's really, it's, it's mixed. A, a good number of, I have optional or required at just um, K through six. But other places it is, it is optional. So it's, it's very mixed and you can see our number from nine fifteen to nine twenty-two. Um, stayed uh, about even from where it was prior. The, the other graphic on the right is um, confirmed new cases just in Washington County and um. What I like about this is that they're breaking it down by the ages twelve to seventeen and age four to eleven. And you can see there was a um, fairly large spike. And again, we don't know if this is just. Germantown because it's all schools in, in Washington County, but it again, it gives us, we're trying to look at our information from, from all sorts of angles to. To help us think about how we're doing um, with COVID. The uh, and this is, this was asked to be um, talked about again and it was the quarantine. Last time we talked about um, if there's a positive case in the same household that quarantining students for ten days, if vaccinated, no need to quarantine unless showing symptoms. Um, someone asked where the verbiage came from. The verbiage is from the Washington Ozaki um, Health Department. Um, one thing that does is if someone is vaccinated for our teachers, it allows them to continue, continue teaching and, and last year when we shut down. Um, and this year's cases are different, but last year when we had to um, shut down it was because we didn't have enough staff. Because there is some shortage with that combined with um, teachers out. Uh, so. Uh, something else I just want to reference is that uh, last year we purchased sprayers for the classroom at the end of the day and um. I was uh, assured that this is now happening in all the schools because it wasn't happening in, in every place at the end of the day. So that is happening. Our statement hasn't changed that masks are recommended and, and as I said, cases seem to be um, increasing. And something else, the, we had uh, before school started, we talked about the thirty percent number and thirty percent is a guide from the Health Department. That's been in place for a long time and it really uh, it's saying if you're at thirty percent. Absentee around a illness and that was when this was put in place, it really was really talking about the flu. And so if you had thirty percent of your kids that had the flu. They're saying school should consider close, you know, closing a um. A classroom or possibly shutting down a school. Now, this was also before kind of the term quarantine exist for schools that is quarantining. Really came out of um, of COVID. Um, and again, we use this as a guide, but it's not um, it's not a hard metric. And um, the, the, the issue is like there was a classroom this last week that had um, twelve out of twenty-four kids out. But I, I think two or three of them were positive, but some, some parents were keeping their kids home because they weren't sure. Other kids, other families were keeping it home because they. Their, thought their child had a couple of symptoms, but, but weren't, weren't testing them. So there's a lot of variations as to. Why kids were out, but we are monitoring this stuff daily. Um, the. The principals and the, the nurse are very good about communicating back and forth and we had a, I had a conversation with myself, that principal and the, and the nurse. Around that classroom um, to decide. I mean, our, our goal is to try to keep. Kids in school as much as possible and that's, that's. Our main factor is when we, we start analyzing the data and looking at the situation, but also. If it, if it makes sense that we need to, to close a section for a short period of time, we'll, we'll do that. And um, another huge piece of data. That I, I'd look at as well as others on, is our dashboard. Um, our, I've met with our tech person on Friday and he is uh, working on adding a second column that would just show all. Absences. So you have a comparison and, and I know someone mentioned baseline. Um, so that would be um, part of. Of the new, the new dashboard and um. It's, we have sixty-six different codes that get put into Skyward and so we have to, what we're, what we're working on, we should have it going by tomorrow, but. We um, are which codes do we want to pull when we pull the data? Because obviously if it's um, like a medically excused or, or. COVID symptoms, those would be things that we would pull, um, and not pull some, someone that's um. On vacation, right? So that it's, it's comparable data. Um, right now, if a child is um. COVID positive, their code is C P or C plus. Um, and that's what gets pulled from Skyward to create the, the data and the, the dashboard, which um. I think in the back may be, maybe difficult to see, but just so, so people understand if I'm looking at. Um, Amy Bell School, which is that first block and on Thursday of last week, nine twenty-three, there was three kids that were positive. Well, on nine twenty-four, there were still three kids positive and what. You could infer it's the same three kids that are out, right? Or one of the kids came back, but now another kid is positive. So those are. Individual kids. The school year to date is the actual number of kids total that have had been positive in that school. One thing that we, we look at uh, very closely is, is that percentage, right? So if I look at Amy Bell last week. They were hovering from point six to point nine percent of, of students out. Um. If you look at the high school, which was had the most students out, but that's also where the most students are. Um, they've been hovering more in the one point two to one point four percent out and that's. That's to me, I mean, this is our data, it's our kids. Um, it means a lot more that we're, we're monitoring this data to go. Okay, what's, what's going on or we need to dig deeper to find out, you know, or if this starts creeping up in the two percent, three percent range. We are going to have some issues and I have to try to figure those out, but we'll, like we did last year, we'll. Figure it out as a school by school, case by case um, situation. So. That's all I have. Any, any questions on, of any of the information?
I had one question with regard, at least I received a, a question or two regarding why there may be a delay. Um, for a day or two where uh, just for the sake of argument, today we might show three active cases. Uh, tomorrow we still show three active cases, but maybe Wednesday, there's an adjustment to the Monday and Tuesday number. Uh, maybe it's four now. Um, is that due to a delay where a, a parent may have kept the child home? Because of a suspected case, took them in and then there's kind of that, a little bit of a delay with regards to you getting the positive results back.
Correct. So again, if you remember this, this is, the computer can only draw the attendance and so if a child was out. Um, let's say Monday and Tuesday because they weren't feeling well and the parent got a test on Tuesday, got the result on Wednesday. The, the secretaries and the health aides will go back in and change that to C, C plus and. Partly then it doesn't count against their attendance either. It's like an ill, but it gives us an idea of which days those students are out. So that's where the, you may have numbers changing.
Yeah, I think it'll be helpful to see all of the illnesses once the dashboard gets updated versus just those that are COVID.
Yep, I know it'll be, it'll be a second column that will just show these are the number of students out and we, we won't um. It won't be broken out like if a kid uh, or a student is going to the dentist, that's something that's being drawn out and that will be in that, in that total as well. And so you have to. Again, it's create some baseline, right, of, of our percentages and um. On average, now this is pre twenty twenty, so two thousand nineteen and before, you know, attendance average is around ninety-six percent on a daily basis. So if you're looking for, for baseline, but four percent of students are out for whatever reason uh, on average.
Brett, uh, I forward to you and the board uh, this past week, uh, an email from a parent who I know. And also about a child who I know, they go to my church. Um, she was questioning uh, district policy uh, relative to. Quarantining uh, for non-COVID related cases. In this case, it was the common cold. Uh, the student uh, obtained a negative COVID test, but was still instructed to quarantine for. Uh, the remaining ten days. So I would just ask that uh, you look at that because I don't think the board set that policy. I want to put some uh, I have a lot of high level of confidence and trust in our moms and dads and doing the right thing. If the kids are sick, they're going to stay home. We don't want them in the school. Um, but uh, we still need to, I would ask that you look at. Policy and if we need to adjust it for this specific case for a cold. Uh, the student didn't have any symptoms, but we're still told to quarantine for ten days. I just asked that you look at that.
Yeah, and they, and I, I met with Tammy this morning over just, and, and there have been um, discrepancies. By different schools and we're, think we're narrowing up that, that student should have, should have come back.
Great. And then you may want to consider adding to the metrics here, a column um. Not only for COVID that you have here, but also maybe for influenza and also for the cold. Because I would love to see uh, the numbers of our kids that are out for the common cold and also for the seasonal flu as well. In relationship to COVID, so. Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions for Mr. Southson?
Mr. Southson, do you know how many teachers have been out um? With COVID or, or vice versa that they've been able to stay in to help teach, but somebody in their family has COVID?
So. I'm, I'm just going to go off this, the slide here.
Oh, sure.
So if I look at district-wide staff, we've had twelve different staff that have been out total. That's from the start of school.
Okay. And then do we know, do, I, I know I talked to um, a couple of principals and substitutes are a little sparse in certain areas. Um, we're working through that, but. How stressed out is our staff with having to fill in these empty spaces?
Right. Uh. So high school, for example, is where it's been, been the most. And so part of our budget cuts for this year. Um, we reduce staff when we could and, and um, there are several uh, teachers and in. Many of the departments that already have overloads, meaning that they had a prep period before, but now they are, they're teaching. And what happens is when there's a, a teacher out and there's not a sub. You have to look across the, the line of teachers and go, okay, who has a prep, second period, third period, fourth, you know, all the way through and then. Those teachers um, yet they can volunteer or get assigned to, to take that and then there's no, then they're going all day. Um, with the kids and, and it's only September and we've had that happen way too many times before. Um. We had uh, almost double the, the amount of people available that could fill in. Um, so that's been, been cut in half and so then. Sometimes you're drawing on the same, same people. Um, so it's, it's had an impact.
Any other questions for Mr. Southson?
Mike? I'd like to make a motion if I may.
I'll entertain a motion.
Right, okay. I move to add the mitigation adjustments for positive COVID nineteen cases in the same household to quarantine students for ten days. This differs from the nine thirteen, twenty twenty-one motion in that the vaccinated and unvaccinated students will be treated equally.
I'll second.
All right. We have a motion in a second. Any discussion?
Oh, go ahead. Uh, my, my one question, is this just for students? Is this for students and staff?
It was for students was my intention.
Okay. And that um. Okay.
My, my question was related to, to staff because uh. With regards to um, if we have a teacher vaccinated and somebody in their household um, has it. Uh, that can put some additional strain. So, but since if, if this motion is only pertinent to students. My question doesn't need to be answered right now.
Right. Um, I think we need to talk about, I don't know what the correct numbers of days are for uh, a student testing negative for COVID, COVID. Um, you, you know, I think some time has elapsed uh, from the exposure to when the test.
They can get tested on day six or seven if I'm correct, and if they are negative on day eight, they may return to school.
Yeah, so I'm, I'm hoping we can be advised uh, of a possible motion uh, for the next board meeting. Uh, to take care of that.
For staff.
Something in, well, for staff and for students. You know, so I, I think what happened on uh, nine thirteen, we didn't get this motion quite right because it wasn't written down. In front of us ahead of time. And I'd like to see this in the board packet in advance, you know, so that we don't have to come back in two weeks. And make an adjustment like we are this evening.
All right. Any other discussion?
Uh, one other question. Uh. It's nine eleven at night. I'm sure we, I'm guessing we probably have. Some students who would fall under the old motion. How, I guess my question is how can we accommodate the late vote versus tomorrow versus. Kids who were okay under the old motion and now are finding out tomorrow morning. That they may fall under this new motion and new policy. Uh, I, I, I don't know what the possible right things to do or accommodations or considerations to make, but. I don't want to run into too much chaos that this may cause tomorrow, like we had run into earlier this year when we removed masks.
Right. I mean, one thing we can do is tomorrow is a, a grace period and then we can. The, get to the health aides and the secretaries, they can look to see who's out for what, what reason, right? And then can communicate uh, to those individual families.
So give them a day in order to do that.
Yeah, we'd, we'd have to.
Is a day enough time?
We can do it in a day. Yeah.
Would you like two days?
Well, it, whatever, whatever, you know, two days helps, you know?
Yeah.
It, it gives us another, another buffer day in there, but um. We can definitely do the communication in one day.
Are we okay with two days just to give everybody enough time to get their ducks in a row?
I'm okay with two days, so an effective date of nine twenty-nine. Okay, thank you for that. I'd like to keep it simple and I think we did.
Could do that as a friendly amendment. Bob, do you accept that?
I do.
Okay. Any other discussion on the motion? See, none of those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion carries. Board will now go into closed session.
I, I, one more comment. Um, I would ask that uh, going forward, um. I know when we put out there for new business discussion and possible action regarding return to school mitigation plan, that's. that's very broad and it creates a lot of excitement in the community and for the moms and dads on both sides. I would just ask that we have a standing return to school update under the reports and information items so that the community knows that we're going to be talking about it every board meeting. But if there's a need to pivot in our mitigation that we address that under new business and we're very specific in terms of what we're going to be talking about. And if we're not going to be talking about masks, we don't need to have an hour and a half of public comments because I'm very sensitive to everyone's time. But if we're going to be talking about, let's say vaccines, you know, why not? You know, I think that's fair game, but I don't feel comfortable talking about that tonight because it's not on here. But I just ask that for, for everyone's benefit going forward.
Easy enough.
Great. Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you. Anything else on item seven?
To, to pile on what Bob just said, I, I, I've asked that the board packet material always include, like in this case, what we just voted on a section seven D as in dynamic. So that it doesn't look like it's missing, you know, from the packet material. So we're, we're not printing these for the board. We're not wasting paper by adding sections. But we should always have in the packet material a section. And if there's going to be a motion, we should know what that motion is in advance. And if there's not going to be a motion or there might be a motion, the way to put it is at the will of the board. You know, so we can make a decision, you know, when we discuss it that evening.
All right. Thank you. Item A, closed session. The board will entertain a motion to go into closed session pursuant to section nineteen point eight-five-one F to discuss a student issue. The board may take action in closed session if necessary or appropriate, or entertain a motion to reconvene into open session to take further action if necessary and approach it and order entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Bob, roll call, please.
Barney?
Yes.
Ryanam and yes, Sonderberg?
Yes.
Mo?
Yes.
Gordon?
Yes.
Colic?
Yes.
Medveda, we are in closed session at nine sixteen.
Thank you. Thank you all for coming and drive home safe.